We're going to call the meeting to order at 6:02. All is present, everyone's present except for Susan. And I'd ask you to stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looking for a motion to approve the agenda as amended per the personnel report.
So who?
Brandon, second by Kim. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We're going to move on to district recognitions, and I'm assuming I'm turning this over to Mark?
That'd be great.
Okay.
I'm going to defer to Mr. O'Neill.
And Mr. O'Neill, okay.
I'm going to hop on the first two, because I don't know if we just said the pledge, because Ellen Neese was just selected as the second place winner in the Elks Americanism Essay Contest, and she will be, her submission will go on to the state level and compete at that level, so we're excited about that. And then Abby Gross, last time we were here we were talking about Scripps Spelling Bee. She's not going to Scripps Spelling Bee, but she did place fourth regionally in the Region Five group, which was about 25 spellers. So there's something to be said about that. So thank you to both of those girls, and a great job there.
Yeah, thank you.
We have several recognitions tonight from a variety of activities, so for the students that are here, if you'd just stand when I mention you, and then the board can recognize you as well. But first of all, our NJPA Students of Excellence are Michaela Horgan and Ellie Disinter. Ellie's here, Michaela's not, they won't make it. They'll be attending a dinner later on in May.
Should we do a dinner?
Dinner.
We did not really.
It was there, it was a treat.
Thank you.
And nice job.
Representing your girls' basketball team, who were section champions and made a state tournament appearance, are captains Haley Webold and Ricky Bistock. Haley was also the Brainerd Dispatch All Area Team Player of the Year. So he Player of the Year, and I are quite honored to have him. Representing the mock trial team, who went to state this year, and the two students here tonight received all-state honors at the state tournament, were for attorney Kate Lynn Murray, and for this Dominic Chee. And last, and certainly not least, but in a hurry to get to their own banquet tonight.
Yes.
Representing the speech team, who won their subsection meet, and we believe it's the first time in school history, we're still waiting for somebody to prove that, so first time in history that we've won a subsection meet for the speech team this year. And these individuals went to qualify for the state speech meet that was held last Friday at Lake Olmert High School. Macknatey's unable to be here with us tonight, but Ellie Disinter again. Eddie Pearson. Emily Usfus. And close to the hall.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure guys. Good job, congratulations.
Thank you.
Enjoy your ham.
Good have you.
Alright, well that was sort of a whirlwind, but they're heartfelt recognitions. Number four, we're going to go with the student council report, and Hunter Gorgas is giving that tonight?
Good evening, members of the board.
Would you like to step over here?
Sure.
Okay.
My name is Hunter Gorgas, and I'm the treasurer of the student council. And so not much has happened since the last meeting, but, so we just decided that the student council elections for each grade will be on May 20th. I'm sorry, May 13th. And then the exec board elections will be on May 20th. And we recently decided not to spring the fling event this year, just as the schedule didn't work out. But we will still do the Mr. Spring the Fling pageant on May 19 in the auditorium at 7:00 PM. And also, we're thinking about doing a color run during Relay for Life over on the cross-country practice route, but it didn't really work out, and so we decided to do that next year for homecoming, so our homes are. Kind of do a color run over there and have kind of add to the festivities. Alright, and then our banquet will be Sunday. It's not approved yet, but it's going to be on Sunday. I almost said it's the 22nd, because there's things going on.
On which part?
On May 22nd. And then also, we're hoping to have a movie night after the training on May 20th. Just have a movie night outside on the football field. As long as we can get in contact with the supplies provider, but we have trouble contacting them, so just keep in contact. Any questions?
Am I the only one that doesn't know what a color run is? What is a color run?
So basically, it's usually like a 5K or 10K, where people wear white or tie dye, and then people have kind of paint, powder. Is that the way you just kind of throw it around?
I've seen commercials on TV where it just pulls up and everybody, I would think would choke a guy, but they're all in a position.
Doing it at night?
Yeah.
Fluorescence and stuff?
That's an option, I guess, but you can, I guess you don't need to do fluorescents, but it just depends on what they like to do on that kind of stuff.
Go ahead, Kurt.
Mr. Chair, on your banquet, Sunday, where would that be at?
We're thinking either Billy's or Commander's.
Okay. And then my final two questions would be, I presume you're going to leave the student council in good hands, and you're going to command or compel a good candidacy for officers? That would be for '16, '17?
I'm hoping so.
Okay. You expect you're good, I mean, student councils feel good?
Yeah, definitely. We're encouraging people to, like I'm the treasurer, Bobber's the president, we're just kind of encouraging the underclassmen to talk to us if they're interested in pursuing that position next year. Just kind of get some shadowing and experience.
You guys have done a great job. I mean, we're not going to have you reporting much longer, a couple more times, but you and Bobber, but excellent work. And then how, got a sense how you're doing financially?
Uh, we're sitting at about $2,500.
You alright there?
Yep, well, 25, unofficially, but probably 1,500 officially, because there's a transaction that we're making.
Well, I don't want to catch you out guard, I just want to give you some kind of a sense of where you're at.
So yeah, we're about $2,500.
Okay.
Do you happen to know the date for the Relay for Life?
Uh, May 11th.
May 11th?
Yeah, that's a Wednesday.
Wednesday? Excuse me? Well, it's a long story, but the TAM's been involved a few times, yeah.
It's a great amount.
Yes, no it hasn't. Anything else we can put on the spotlight? Thank you very much, Mr. Gorgas. That leads us to the 4B, the superintendent report, so Mr. Lindholm, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I have a couple of important updates for the board. First...
As opposed to on your board?
Right. Right. You do the trivial stuff, right?
Okay.
Several times over the past year, the Economic Development Council here in Pequot Lakes has been in discussion about how the trail site park might be enhanced or modified once the highway realignment project is completed. Looking at it, I think it's safe to say that the council views it as an opportunity to, if we're going to do this, how can we take this and make it an opportunity for that park? And make it a real downtown square that's a destination location for...
And heat by foot, what are your boards on?
For social events and for the events that we hosted already, and to just gel the downtown. And one of the concepts that came up early in the process is moving traffic more like a town square coming up the old 371, which is of good interest to the school district, or of interest, I think, to the school district for a couple of reasons. One, if traffic comes up to, say, Woodman, and then ends up turning right or left to go up to Government Drive Square, or come down to, what is that, Second Street? There's First and Second Street, actually. To just go into the main street area in front of the businesses, there's going to be a lot more visibility to the school as people come down that road. But also, I think as a district, we might have some interest in thinking about how if that's really going to be a pedestrian-heavy setup for a park, how it connects in some meaningful way to the school, and how we make safe school pathways through there. So I'm mentioning this at the board table so that folks don't get caught by surprise that the city is having this conversation. I think the district has some interest in engaging in that and being involved when there are input meetings. You all as board members or others. It's obviously not our decision, it's the city council's decision, but one that we may want to chime in on as they have it. I have not been able to be at either of the first two input meetings. I did run to City Hall today to clarify what the process is that they're using to walk through this decision. They're really in a three-phase process, and they're in phase one, which is concepts. Phase two, next year, in their FY '17 budget, they'll budget some dollars for drawing out more detailed sketches, so then they start making decisions on, we're going to have this structure, and this structure, and this structure put into the park at some point in the journey of the park development. Then they get into phase three, where they actually get into drawing up construction documents, and that's when they're deciding how wide are the lanes of traffic? What's the actual routes of the sidewalks going through the park, et cetera? So again, I feel like we as a district have a vested interest in how that park becomes something connected to our district as a focal point in this community. If we have opinions about what should be there, we should be involved in the input processes, so...
Mr. Chair? If I may...
Oh yeah, go ahead, Brandon.
I would, that's great to think about the visioning of all that, and how it connects to this park. My big concern as a school board member is making sure that we're staying cognizant of what's the best traffic route for our buses going in and out of the city.
Absolutely.
And safety concerns, and jockeying the buses that would need to happen in a route, some major route change like that, and making sure streets are quick to handle buses of that size that are going to have to make multiple 90-degree turns, and just making sure that we're thinking about this from a traffic flow perspective, rather than a walking shopping district that they're proposing. So that's most of the year. That would be my big concern.
I couldn't agree more, it's also why we weighed in on the detour conversation as well, because of that area.
Yep.
Well, at some point are they going to have some sort of overview, or do they have an overview that we can look at?
At City Hall, they have two concept drawings that are very concept. They're not, nothing has been decided. So they're trying to settle in on things like, if you go north of 11, and does the road continue to be there at that point? Or does it go away completely, connecting the Bobber and Cole Memorial Building to the park that's on the east side of Kerr Highway 271? So conceptually, do we want the road or not? Let's talk about that, and that's where they are in the process. So have they drawn, they have a sketch of what that might look like conceptually at this point.
Are they asking us to be cooperative willing partners? Or are they just going to drive this, and then we'll give them our good questions, concerns, and whatnot?
They've scheduled input process meetings for the entire community, so we're considered a stakeholder in the community. And my point in bringing it up tonight is to say, let us, let's not pass that up, and let's be engaged in it. Because if they make decisions, and we choose not to offer input, then it's our fault that we weren't part of the input.
Mr. Chair, thank you. So I suppose you're wishing for solicitation of input from us?
At some point, I'll continue to forward you notes when I get them, about when those opportunities come up.
Okay, but I just have to make a public statement right here. I wasn't meaning to heckle you, but I really am serious about a leaderboard, some sort of community identification, communicating board that works for both the school district and this community in both segments. I think that would be what we wanted, that for years. So that's publicly noted, and I'll make sure I get that to you in the end.
Yep, yep.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Dan.
Second item is, a handful of area school districts, including us, Pequot Lakes, have been looking at the possibility of, is it a good decision for us at this point to look to an employment agency, and in this case, one called Teachers on Call for employing substitute teachers and paraprofessionals? I've been looking at that as an option for Pequot Lakes for two reasons over the last couple of years. One, the shortage of, the oncoming and growing shortage of teachers and subs. We don't have anybody who is involved in trying to recruit and increase the number of substitutes right now. We still don't have the manpower to do that. The other big reason is as the Affordable Care Act has been rolled in, we've seen a significant amount of increase in workload to Lori offering and the HR office and the data collection. I would add to that, I think that we have a pretty significant exposure to some liability with subs. We don't in any systematic way have a training program for our substitute teachers. Frankly, if you asked all of the area districts around us, they don't either. That's exposing a little bit of a hole in our system that I think that we need to look at, and this is one way to do it. So we've been looking at it. I did not bring it to the board a year ago, because none of the area districts were ready to take a hard look at it. And doing it in isolation is not a good move. Particularly, what you want to do is do it as a group of districts that share a lot of the same substitutes. Because the advantage to the substitutes is, they then have one employer and one system that they go into to pick up all their substitute jobs in multiple districts, and it's seamless for them. They have one W-4 form, one employee paycheck coming from one place. There are a lot of other benefits to the subs as well. They have opportunity for some benefits. This agency incentivizes, creates incentives for subs that work a lot of hours, and are dependable subs. They provide training, and they actually pay their subs every week, rather than we pay our subs every month. So from our, from the substitute lens, this is not a bad thing at all. This is a good thing for them. It also helps us in a scenario where once in a while we try to hire a long-term sub, and they bump up against TRA stipulations, where there's limits to how much money they can make in a calendar year. So that's another benefit of the subs. To the district, we benefit from that decreased workload with the HR payroll office. Someone focused entirely on recruitment, a significant reduction to exposure to liabilities, and particularly in the area Affordable Care Act. Some relief there on some of that reporting. Now, we did make a strategic move a year ago. We did switch to using ASOP. ASOP is a telephone system for scheduling subs. That was, A, the right thing to do for efficiencies, but B, Teachers on Call uses that system. And I knew that going into this. And so our, the feel of the change to the day workforce for our secretaries and our staff would be, there wouldn't be any. They would, they wouldn't feel much of any difference at all. We still maintain local control of how much we pay subs. We would still have our same subs, they just get a paycheck from a different place. So at this time, Pillager, Aiken, and most importantly, Pine River Baptist are looking at saying yes to jumping into that. And Pine River Baptist is important to us, because we share a ton of subs between the two districts. So again, I wasn't willing to even consider this a year ago without having Pine River and someone else with us. Doing it solo doesn't make sense. So no final decisions have been made. The four superintendents have been talking, our business managers have been looking into that, and it's something that I may be looking to pursue here for '16, '17. And I'd be open to answering any questions or thoughts initially on it, before I go too far.
Mr. Chair, I've got a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Kim.
I have a few questions. The first one, I read through your minutes, the notes this week, but the first question was, for local control today, you guys have your list that you called from. If I understand this correctly, can a teacher still request a certain sub? Does it still work the same way? Or is kind of that control, like they're going to send a sub, they make the determination of who's sending it?
All of that control is exactly the same as it is now. We still have the ability to have our preferred subs. The way we manage it now is the way we could continue to manage it, and that is if we know a teacher's going to be out next week for something, we can schedule that sub ahead of time, line it up, block it in, we have total control over that.
So all you guys talked about that could, was the downside, why haven't we done it? I mean, I'm looking at whether there's ever done to be one, so I'm curious as to what that is.
In a previous district, I navigated a similar transition. It wasn't this particular vendor, it was a different vendor, but there were some misperceptions. That misperception, that stigma that's out there with outsourcing anything carries some baggage for some people. So the trick is being very transparent in communication on the front end about the whys, the how this is better for you, how it's better for the district. That makes your breaks a successful transition. The one downside might be people that come to that with a misperception.
You mean the subs?
Subs, or sometimes people internal. In the previous district, I had staff internally say that that's a bad thing. It wasn't, but it was their perception.
But let me understand correctly, if all of these districts go forward, subs wouldn't have a choice, they would need to leverage that entity?
Correct, which is why having multiple districts go simultaneously is important. Yes, yes. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I think, I mean, it sounds like if I'm hearing you right, I mean, we're kind of waiting as a group to make a decision. It sounds like when everybody's ready to go, we might, we might make that recommendation.
Oh, hold the trigger, yep, yep.
Okay, I'm reading between the lines there.
That's correct.
And then the other part is, what is the contract on our side? Is that a one-year agreement, is it three-year? Like what's the sort of commitment, and if we want to be done, what does that look like?
That's a really good question. We can break the agreement at any time. I didn't kneel down to visit a one-year, a three-year, a two-year, but I can give that to you, shooting to the mouth.
So as a vendor, I would assume they put a time limit on the initial contract?
Yeah, an annual one. I'm thinking, did you look at that, Jenny? I know I did look at you, but I didn't take time to look at that. I'm sure it would be a one-year, and then a renewal.
And how much more cost than this one? Because we're obviously paying them something.
That's correct.
I'm sorry if I missed that.
Nope, nope. I got to remember the number. I wrote it in the, I think it was, it's R daily rate plus, I think the number was 26% of that daily rate. And that what I wrote is, be careful, because they will be responsible for planning, paying TRA and FICA and some of those costs above. We'd pay $100 a day for a sub, plus TRA and FICA. So they cover that in that 26% markup. So the real markup's about 10%.
Then do we cancel ASOP, and they carry ASOP, or do we keep ASOP?
That stays the same, that stays the same. So where you save costs is in, or you break it. It's not a cost saver, and I don't want to ever come off like a...
I would assume it wouldn't be.
Yeah, it's not a cost saver. What it, where we save soft costs is in payroll, and in increased workload with what's going on in that office. They take that, they own all the compliance with ACA and hour track and all of that. So what, how do you put a dollar amount on that? That's free.
Can you ask one more question, which was the one you were asking? Would there be any benefits to not going with the group in St. Elmo?
Say that again?
So if we're the one school that doesn't onboard, would there be any benefit to that from the global subs?
Would there be any benefit if they, if other districts moved and we don't?
To the subs? I mean, do we get... Yeah, I'm just curious.
For example, in your notes, you said that Brainerd and Crosby probably wouldn't be part of the group next year.
Yeah, they haven't voiced the interest.
Oh, interesting. So it sounded like technically it could be part of that. Is there an exclusivity agreement with the firms? They can still register with both of us?
That is correct. They can still work for both. Yeah, I'm sorry if I didn't answer your question fast enough.
Sounds like it's just purely administrative to a degree.
It is.
Since it's all one way or the other, if you're not on the bus or off, you can ride the bus one-on-one, when you know one is the sub. We can get the sub, and we're out of that program.
That is correct, that is correct.
An extension of Kim's question is, pick a sub, run a particular task outside of that group, pick another sub inside the group. Both in the same room, catch each other.
Correct. Well, it's not exclusive, that works.
Right, it's not exclusive. Pull from the group, or not.
Brandon?
Mr. Chair, it sounds like, Mr. Lindholm, it sounds like there's two main benefits. It's the administrative portion of the scheduling, and then also the ACA reporting, to stay compliant. I've got a similar issue with my company, where I'm flooding up on, if they work too many hours, and having affordable healthcare and all that stuff. So I just outsourced my payroll last week, and outsourced the ACA compliance reporting as part of that.
Okay.
Yeah. So there's obviously a cost of doing that, but it gives you a lot of management tools that come up on the dashboard. Who should you allow to work overtime, who shouldn't you allow?
Right.
And the same thing, I would think, with payroll.
That's exactly right, that's exactly right.
And, you know, I'm using EDP for that. And that's, I think, going to be a big help for us long-term.
Yeah. I appreciate that comment. Yeah, I appreciate that comment, Brandon. And what you're highlighting is what we're scrambling about, how, how would we even start tracking that with enough details and know we're in compliance? I mean, those are, that's a lot of heavy lifting. And it takes that burden of subs and goes, it's your problem.
Well, it's really bad when you find out that you're not.
Exactly.
And then who's tracking it on the other side? Is that like a whole new group that's tracking the new requirements? Like is that, is that tracking from, I mean, is there a penalty from the government if we're not tracking that?
The human industry, you know?
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Is there a cost if we break the agreement, pardon me? Instead of one-year contract, and that we can break it at any time? Is there a cost?
I can give that, I'll give you in more notes next week. I'll look at that, that question and the one that Kim did ask about how long that took.
Okay, so then my second question is, what type of, this is going to sound odd, but what kind of background stuff do they do on our subs? Is it the same as what we currently have?
I would argue, they're probably a whole lot better than we are. In that they do all their normal background checks, but then they also provide training, required training, which we don't do any currently. And so that's the quick answer to your question. That's frankly, one of the biggest worries I have, is from an exposure to liability standpoint, we really don't do any training. We don't have a lot of good quality control in this arena, and no districts around us do.
Oh, we would enter this into a long time.
Put someone in their job description that you are putting together training seminars every time you bring onboard a sub, and those kind of trickle in.
On Saturdays at 7:00 at night, in December?
Right, right. So that's my point. We're not staffed to do that. And there is a hole there. And frankly, some of the biggest HR issues I've dealt with in previous districts is subs. So this is an arena where I can say, they train them, they do the background checks, they own the responsibility there. We still, the previous question about picking subs and local control, yes, we pick our subs, and we still have the ability to block subs, just like we do now, that we had issues with. So yeah, that's a big reason why this has been on my list for a couple of years. It's just I haven't had the political will with other districts around us, and I feel like finally there's traction there. I do believe that if us four go, Aiken, Pillager, Pine River, and as I, I do believe the others in Crow Wing County will follow very soon thereafter. The subs will quickly figure out that, does it benefit for them working for Teachers on Call if the districts do that?
One last question.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Does, you said Brainerd is not going, and what was the other district?
Brainerd and Crosby are the other two close enough that I would say we might share a sub, so those two are not.
Okay, and do they use a different system that is comparable? This is the one you're looking at?
No, they employ their own subs, just like we do now. They employ their own subs, just like we do now. That I know of. I shouldn't say it, such confidence, I'm pretty sure.
Well, back to the cost of the district. So who are these people? Where are they from? Teachers on call, is this local, is this a national thing?
Uh, Minnesota, I believe, is the same cloud around, I believe.
And then, I mean, I know you've explained, I mean, the charge for the sub is that rate, $100 a day, plus a percentage.
16%.
Yeah, and you've explained that how that goes down to about 10%.
Correct.
If you take in TRA, FICA, and other regular benefit costs.
And FICA too.
So, so really then, if we do this, our sub rate goes from $100 a day to 110?
Essentially, for cost of district.
And it's something to be considered, obviously.
It is, yep.
Okay, that's, that's all I got right now, the same.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry.
No, no, Kurt, go ahead.
It's a timing issue. You say you're waiting for this to happen in the next...
The next month will be, I'll be, if this is gonna happen, I'll bring this back to you with more information and a recommendation.
Soon, soon.
Yep.
Okay.
Because what we'll want to do is we'll want to take advantage of the ending of the school year to come in, recruit, sign them up, get everyone who we have in-house currently, roll into the new system, and then host some recruits.
Fully available at 16th and 17th.
So I guess I have one or two more of them short ones. Why is Brainerd not coming aboard on this? And then, have we spoken to any of our existing subs about how they feel about us doing something like this?
I have not, I have not spent time speaking with subs. It's partially why I wanted to bring it up in the public here tonight and make sure people know that it's under consideration. To your Brainerd question, I think there's just a lack of, of knowledge about it at this point. And with the change in leadership at Brainerd, I don't think they were ready to pull trigger on anything like that.
How many subs does this Brainerd have every single day?
It's a lot.
At least one or two that are true for 10% of them.
I would assume, yeah.
Well, there's lots to consider. We'll obviously look forward to your recommendation and the substantive facts behind your recommendation.
Yeah, I will make sure that Pine River especially is onboard before I bring on a recommendation. I don't want to jump the gun there, so, thank you. That's enough, I can keep on moving on. I have legislative sessions, I have a lot of these stuff, I just want folks to remember that. Right now, the, the two chambers have put together their education bills. And the Senate's at about a hundred million, the House is somewhere between zero and 50, and the governor's at about 60 million. So they're, they're, they're spread out, now they go to conference committee and they, they banter about what they've come to bring out, so.
Well, and none of it is really, say, called funding.
Well, all of that would be funding, but it's all tied to just little sliver things.
Right. As I was talking last year, more or less, that two and two, right?
Exactly, exactly. Nothing of substance.
Anything else? I mean, don't cut yourself short if you've got something going.
No, no, we're good.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Superintendent Lindholm.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, that leads us to the consent agenda, consent agenda. We all have a look at it here. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Kim and Derek. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Leads us to our first action item, which would be 6A, a resolution to approve NJPA grant proposal for developing open education resources for college in the school courses. Are we looking for the motion first?
Why don't I explain what it is and someone can make that, move the motion. Or, uh, resolution, sorry.
So are we reading the resolution and then moving? I'm just asking, I'm sorry.
I'll explain what it is, and then someone can move the motion, or move the resolution and read through it. What this is, is every year, in the spring, now this is our third year row, that NJPA has hosted an innovative grant funding cycle. That due date is at the end of this month, so it's coming very quick. One of many, I, I think there's gonna be upwards of seven or eight or nine substantial applications for the grant money. One of them is this application. This application is being submitted by, it's authored for the most part by CLC. But I have said I am willing to help champion it and put our name on it, because at Peacock Lakes, we have a significant CIS program. And this is of great value to our district. So what the grant says is, they want to use innovative funding dollars from NJPA to fund the time that staff at CLC, the professors at CLC and our CIS teachers put in to research, find open education resources and then bring in, and then bring it into their courses that they teach in their college and the school courses. So the grant, the monies pays for the teacher time and, and basically a stipend to that kind of situation. I believe it's a, it's a win for the district on a couple of fronts, maybe three. One, as these resources get developed, they will eliminate or significantly reduce the need for expensive paper resources. So open education resources are open resources online that are free. So we've stopped having to buy expensive textbooks for students in CIS classes and PSEO classes. That's one advantage to the district. Another advantage to the district is having the college professors and our teachers working very meaningfully on developing the curriculum for the courses is always a win. That collaborative effort is a win. And then the long-range strategic advantage is being able to come back to the HLC three years from now and argue that it was our teachers that wrote the curriculum. How might it be okay to say they're not qualified to teach it if they actually wrote the curriculum? Which is kind of the distinguishing difference right now. Right now, the college professors write the curriculum, our teachers teach it. This is taking a step towards, while our teachers were meaningfully involved in the development of the coursework, so. That's a long-range chess match.
With that, so I'm looking for a motion to adopt the following resolution.
Salute.
Now, read.
Second.
Brandon? And then I would ask one of us to perhaps read this resolution. I could. Do you have our copy?
I do.
Okay.
It's a long one.
Yeah, thank you, Kurt.
Read. ISD 186, Regular School Board meeting April 18, 2016. Resolution to approve submission of NJPA innovative funding grant for development of open education resources for college and the schools' courses. Whereas the administration of Peacock Lakes Public Schools desires to submit an innovative grant, funding grant application to NJPA for the purpose of developing open education resources for college and the schools' courses. Therefore be resolved by the Peacock Lakes Public Schools Board of Education to support its submission.
Thank you, Kurt.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just, I just want to make a couple of comments about this. This is obviously something I'm pretty familiar with with OER. And a question I would have is a school district, if we are gonna leverage OER resources? It's one thing if we write them, but I would just challenge us as a district, if we're gonna use other people's OER resources, what's the vetting process? But I think it's an interesting piece, so just from the, or when you think about open education resources, other people write them, we take them in. Typically textbooks are vetted, so it's a great idea, but what if we're using that content? So it's just something that I think eventually we'll need to think about a policy and a vetting process. If we have teachers pulling in resources that we haven't vetted down the road. I know we're gonna create this for college, but I would imagine this, we're gonna start going down this path for other resources as well. Which is a positive thing, it's just something I think we need to be aware of.
You want me to unwrite this? Oh, no, it's a great point.
It's just, it's, it's one of the good and the bad things about OER resources. It's a great, and for this, this is very deliberate and we're being, it's a purpose for college and schools. But my guess is this will open the door eventually to other things. But I would just kind of challenge the district, it might be something that we'll look at a policy to have in place if we're gonna pull other people's resources from outside the district at some point.
Anyone else?
May I, may I speak back just a little bit? I, I couldn't agree more, and I think you're spot on. And I would argue that we are about 20 steps ahead of higher ed in that arena. What's fascinating about this proposal is that if you got into the meat of the grant, the vision is to allow those professors to find those resources and then table them up on a, on a web-based platform so that other professors who teach the course can see it and use it. But in higher ed, if you're the professor, you teach whatever you want. Because somehow having taken a bunch of courses makes you the god of the content, which I find fascinating and frankly systemic bad practice. What we're trying to put in place in Peacock Lakes is structures and processes to drive that vetting process, such as leader, teacher leadership positions that come together and collaboratively debate about what the outcome we're trying to get and student achievement is and what resources best align to deliver on that. And it's that collaborative process that's vetting, that's the good professional debate about, like what I just said, what's more effective or not. And so this is an, I'm learning so much about that politic between higher ed and K-12 in this one. Part of this was actually to start driving from the grassroots level, just start driving collaboration. Because that component is kind of a new component with some of our higher ed brothers and sisters in education. So I'm right with you, and I looked at that and was like, wow, okay, that's a baby step.
And I think, I think the thing that's happening all across the country right now is that OER is becoming more common in K-12. But, but the bigger issue in K-12 is, how do you make sure the content is vetted? Which is very different than higher ed. It's very common in higher education, but in K-12, it's becoming more and more common. And I would just say as a district, if we want to be proactive, how do we think about this? Outside of this setting, this is a little bit more unique, but I think Brainerd put a great point that, you know, with your team, if we can start thinking about, maybe we need to have a policy if somebody brings an OER course to a non-college. So if we start thinking about our common math and English courses, because it's gonna come.
Oh, yeah, it already is, it already is.
Right, I don't know if it's here with our regular courses, but I know that's gonna become a piece of that. And I think it's the fact that we do take, you know, we're, we're educating the public to certain standards, how to make sure that those courses are part of that. So that's, that's all I want to say about that.
Yeah, couldn't agree more.
Kurt? Well, I think you just clarified, Kim, I was curious about what you're getting at. I mean, so what you're saying, we want to hold a standard by what, the next, OER, other, other, uh... Open education resources?
Yep.
That's just stuff that's out there, and you're, you're concerned about the standard.
Well, like he said, they're building, they're building a course for our, for our courses. So I mean, it's very deliberate, it's very...
Well, this is a constructive thing, something that's not...
Think about, think about the day we don't have a textbook for English, you know? And now I pull in a course from somebody down in Texas, which it could be a really good course, or it could be a really bad course. And I think it's just something we need to start thinking about, is we're, we're in a world where you can share those resources, which is great.
Like Moodle, I mean, can I show my ignorance here?
So that's, that's what you build it on, that's the place.
And Ms. Mealy in her tour a couple of years ago, and she saw this, all those wonderful things she was doing and driving from... I mean, I know I'm, you know, an idiot on this, and this is something I would have never taught him, Kim, so thank you. But, but that's what we're talking about.
It is what we're talking about, and you've heard me mention, or seen notes, you've seen an acronym MCCS, sort of curriculum consortium, something or other. I can't remember what that acronym. That's an example of a statewide effort to create a, a good vetting process so that it's not just a district on its own creating garbage, but it's got a purposeful process to say what's best and then it's good enough to get up on the platform for the rest of the state to use. So that's why we jumped in on that one, because it was one that I, I felt like, okay, they built in the rigorous process that I would expect. So I, I love your point, I think you're spot on.
And I think the bigger thing is that the district, you know, because I think about when this stuff comes to us, at some point it shouldn't have to. We should just have a policy that's like, Mr. Lindholm and team, they know we have a policy with OER resources, whether it's the state of Minnesota, the one they're building or this, and it just goes through that, so.
Right.
Just let you supply.
Well, question quite good, go further, Karen. Is the grant process, or this wouldn't be under grants, then Kim, it would just be regularly available out in the world? Or, and is there anything unique to this grant process? Is what I thought you were first going after, Kim, was about the, the way we're going about a grant.
Well, I guess the question I would ask, Mr. Lindholm, is, are you bringing this here because it's a grant process or because of the nature of the grant? Like, why isn't that the board table?
It's the grant process. It requires a resolution from the board supporting me championing and submitting.
Yeah, I think it's great, I mean, I think it's a...
It's one step in the door of higher ed, and it's kind of neat just to get into that.
But once we get the grant completed, we put, have we put a systemic plan in place, it's easy to execute upon and over, I don't know what's that? Once they've gone through the exercise of preparing this grant, we have everything in place, then we can do that over again and again.
Is the grant for one year?
Yeah, the grant is, is one year of funding for teachers to, to, to do this development. So we would, we would, maybe three or maybe four of our teachers would participate along with a couple of teachers from Brainerd, a couple of teachers from Crosby, and some professors. So it's just a one-year deal.
Yeah, so once that mechanism is in place, the mechanics of it, I'm asking, does that stay in place or is that just kind of put together just for this grant?
Well, let's separate the mechanics of Peacock Lakes Schools developing this curriculum and the partnership with higher ed on CIS questions, because they're very different modes. We're working hard to develop the infrastructure and the processes. That's the whole digital curriculum library, that's what we're doing here in-house. What's unique about this is it's saying higher ed and K-12, you're gonna come together and sit at the same table. Thus, will the mechanics be in place after the grant? I can't promise that. This is a, this is an effort to try to inspire some meaningful collaboration that doesn't exist currently.
Right. It's funded by NJPA, a region representative.
Right.
So, yeah, Mel?
And it's...
Yep.
Anyone else?
I just have one.
Absolutely.
I find it exciting, simply because having been the god of a course at the college level, I developed my own curriculum, wrote my own syllabus, did this many times with nobody double checking the work I did. Of course, I, you know, personally used what the standards were we were testing to, and we had some safety things in there. But I just think this is exciting, that we're getting the players who are critical to our college and the schools' courses continuing to work together. So I think that's fantastic.
Thank you, Mel. Anyone else? It requires a roll call vote, so I'm gonna start with Brandon.
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Derek?
Aye.
Valerie?
Aye.
I vote aye as well, and the motion carries six to nothing.
Now, let's hope we get the grant, right?
Yeah. Well, Kim, yeah, we'll go down with this guy, but it's a lot of good points to raise here, and I know you'll stand on top of it. 6B, this is the first reading of policy 706.5, memorials and memorial activities for deceased students and/or staff. It's presented for its first reading, we'll have two more readings. I might have Superintendent Lindholm just speak for a moment about the two pieces of paper I have in front of me, Mel.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. For our public and those interested in this, on page 78 of the board packet, there is a draft of a board policy, policy 706.5. That is a new policy, it's not a revision of something we currently have. And it is my recommendation that the board adopt a policy for how to guide our school leadership team when we have the worst-case scenario, when we have a student who dies, or we have a staff member or someone very intricate to the school community pass away. Having navigated that in a couple of places several times, it is always a highly charged emotional time. And there are people who want things understandably so, from the place of their group. And having guidelines put together that create some boundaries and some safeguards, some guidance, I guess some guidance is the best way to say it, on how to handle those situations so that we honor the people who are impacted. But we also, most importantly, we remember that a lot of times, 85% of the folks in the system maybe don't even know the person who passed away, and they deserve to continue going on, student teaching and learning, which is so hard. We also know more now today than we ever have before about best practice and how to handle those kinds of situations due to the progress of mental health work. And all of the professionals in this line are in unified in their stance that the most important thing for children in a crisis like that is making sure school is a place of normalcy. Return to normalcy as quickly as possible. And so this, this proposed policy provides a 30,000-foot policy or directive that our mission is teaching and learning, it's, it's teaching and learning. And that the, the practice of memorializing someone who we care about really should take place in other places. Churches, homes, other organizations. It's not the mission of the school district, as much as we do feel like we're a family a lot of times, that's not our mission. And so we have to stay tight to that. Then behind the policy are a couple of pages of regulation. The policy in the first two pages charges the superintendent with also having regulations that detail guidelines to how to handle some situations, more detailed. Things like graduation ceremonies and things like that, so how we communicate to the public. So that's the why behind this. It's so that when we don't have a tragedy and we're in clear thinking, that we make a good decision and put a box around this, guidelines around this, so that when we do end up in a tough situation, an emotional situation, we can look to some guidelines for guidance at that time. That's the why, and you have the draft in front of you. I'm open to answer questions, but obviously no action tonight, it's just the first read. If you have feedback for me about tweaks to the policy, please send it to me directly. For the public, the board did see this in the work session and did offer, I think, a couple of very good suggestions that we did already make in here. I think, Mr. Anderson, your, your comment about the, in the definition of memorial activities, we took out the word back, and I appreciated that a lot. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, leads us to 6C, donations. We have a number of donations tonight. We'll just read the amount, the donor, and the designated use, and then we'll move in a second later. $1,346.17 from the Wells Fargo Matching Gifts Program, Gregory Cook, for the high school PBIS program. $147.94, Wells Fargo Matching Gifts Program, Pauline Gustafson, for the athletic department. $25,000 from First National Bank for the general fund. $250 for the American Legion Number 49 Auxiliary for the band program. $150 for the Pequot Auto Repair Super Mileage Team. $250 Patriot Athletic Club Speech Program. $1,100 Patriot Athletic Club Girls Basketball State Attorney Expenses. $35 Lauren Nikish in memory of Jim Maraskovich, Designated Use of Ikalapa. $182.35 from Aiken Dairy, eighth grade field trip transportation. $75 Pequot Lakes PTA Special Education Field Trip Transportation. The remaining 10 or so are all headed for the robotics team as they go to the world championships, I believe.
Universe.
So I'm going to get, I thank them all in advance, but here we go. $200 from Lurfield Construction LLC. $100 from Ronald and Linda Bebehauser. $100 from Stefan and Gabriel Leifeld. $500 from Jay and Linda May. $25 from Constance Jelenic. $30 from Mark and Ginger Hoffman. $25 from Kent and Heidi Atkins. $75 from North Country Custom Builders, Inc. $200 from Nicholas Leifeld. $75 from Kay.
Yep.
And $100 from Anthony and Norma Leifeld, all going into the robotics team. I just want to thank everyone of those donors for something they did above and beyond, yes. I'm looking for a motion to accept the donations as presented.
Sub moved. Second.
And Kim and Valerie. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Announcements and meeting dates. So quickly, Monday, May 2nd, we're going to have a board work session at 6 o'clock. Couple weeks from now, I guess. Wednesday, May 11th, 4:00 p.m., our employee recognition. I believe Brenda sent out an invitation to all of us for that. Should be a great time. Monday, May 16th, 6:00 p.m., our regular board meeting for May. I'm going to go this far with this. And then Friday, May 27th, 7:00 p.m. would be graduation. If we can talk a little bit more about that, work session, if you wish, but it's coming.
Let's do that.
It's coming. I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
Sub moved. Second.
Valerie and Kim, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, one and all.